Thank you. I'd like to call our special council meeting to order. It is 5:56 PM. Let the record show that all council members are present except Mayor Protem Adams. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready. We only have one other person that would be speaking and the gentleman that's with you right now, he was up there before I got started. All right.
Do we need to do the approval of agenda?
Oh, yes. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Gonzalez.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Segar, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Mr. Kendrick, any day. Councilwoman Segar. Okay, the motion passed four to zero. Let the record note that Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Alvarez has taken a break. All right, whenever you're ready, Madam Secretary.
PH-25037, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance authorizing a substantial amendment to annual action plans for program years 2017, 2021, 2022, and 2023 to reprogram home funds to provide for affordable housing activities and to remove the city's requirement under the 2024, excuse me, 2020-2024 Consolidated Strategic Plan for HUD Certified Housing Counseling to provide services to recipients as a provision of the Home Program Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, TBRA. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance adopting a substantial amendment to community development annual action plans for FY 2017, 2021, 2022, and 2023 for the reprogramming of home program funds to tenant-based rental assistance program activities and the removal of the requirement from the 2020-24 Consolidated Plan for the use of HUD certified housing counselors to provide services to tenant-based rental housing assistance recipients as a provision to receiving assistance, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date."
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. McNair, welcome back.
Thank you for the short suspense between meetings, ma'am. I appreciate it. Okay. So, a substantial amendment occurs when there is a change in the purpose, scope, location, or beneficiaries of an activity or project. Home grants remain from previously eligible projects that were completed or canceled without utilizing the entire amount allocated, or when CHODO funds are converted into entitlement funds. Reprogramming is necessary to maintain compliance with HUD and Home Expenditure Regulations. Home funds, you have eight years to spend, or they recapture those every year, September 30th. If you have those monies from eight years ago, they take the money back. CDAC, that's the Community Development Advisory Committee, met April 4th to discuss a substantial amendment reprogramming of access home funds and the timely expenditure of home. Reprogramming home funds will allow for the use in the home housing programs, specifically tenant-based rental assistance program, which will achieve timely performance with regulatory expenditure requirements of home funds. The HUD certified housing counseling is not required under tenant-based rental assistance program unless the jurisdiction elects to include it as part of their program. Colleen has only one agency certified to provide certified housing counseling. The number of persons expected to experience an undue burden with the requirement of attending HUD certified housing counseling prior to receiving rental assistance will increase the wait period and likelihood that the household will experience housing instability and/or eviction. Removing this requirement under the goals and objectives of the TEAPER program from the fiscal year 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan is recommended, and this will allow the city to assist households expeditiously and address the immediate need for assistance. Annual Action Plan amendments to maintain compliance with HUD, as I previously stated, the reprogramming of completed, canceled, or reprioritized home fund projects are as follows. Fiscal year 2017, $1,573.80, '21, $73,683.30, '22, $88,376.25, and '23, $456,768, for a total of $619,641.30. The citizen comment period was open from June 9th until today. We did not receive any comments on the substantial amendment. And just a quick note, I know the last time I was here in June, we talked about expanding access for citizen comment period or notification. The communications department did post the open comment period on their socials, and we did discuss with finance about putting it in utility bills, but their July mailers were already decided upon, and there's a two-page maximum, so we weren't able to do that, but we can plan for that next year. The availability of the substantial amendment draft was here at City Hall with the City Secretary, the Community Development Department, both Public Libraries, Lions Club, Park, Senior Center, and then online. When I get to the next two, these are the same places. For the sake of time, I won't repeat that for you. Next steps, if approved, we will submit the substantial amendment to HUD no later than August 15th of 2025. And staff recommends that City of Colleen Council approve an ordinance for the substantial amendment to reprogram home funds to home housing programs, particularly the TEAPER program for program years 2017, '21, '22, '23, and to the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, and removing the requirement for the HUD certified housing counseling as a provision for eligible households to receive assistance.
Thank you. There are no questions for you. We will hold a public hearing. Mr. John Hahn, if I mispronounced your name, please correct it.
Madam Mayor, Council.
Sir.
I'm the president of the Central Texas Home Builders Association, and we are really starting to look at our county as more, and getting into more of the affordable housing and fixing some of the downtown areas and these areas. And I feel like if we could come together and put some teams together throughout the council, throughout the city, the management and stuff like that, we can really come together as a community to fix some of these things and get more affordable housing and address the distressed housing in our northern area of Colleen. And I just wanted to really just bring unity in these decisions as we move forward from home builders to developers, to councils, to city members. And that's really all I had to say, but.
Thank you, sir, for wanting to join the team and work together to help the North Side. Thank you. Council members, anybody have any comments on this? Any questions?
I would like to start off by asking where the meetings have been that are reasonable and timely, access to local meetings whether virtual or live, including but not limited to community development. CDAC Town Hall meetings and City Council meetings, they are meant to be informal and allow participants to engage in communications on housing and community development needs. There's supposed to be a registration of them. Because it is anticipated representatives of the local Hispanic population will attend these meetings, city will have a bilingual representative available. However, I don't know that you reached out to any of the Hispanic organizations. I know one that for sure was not invited or talked to or asked about this. There was not any of those agreed upon items as approved in the 2020 citizen participation plan. So, I will object just on that part. Secondarily, the substantial amendment was going to be applied towards the homeless-to-housed program. The last meeting, this council voted to postpone that indefinitely and hold on to the CIP money, so we can't use that for other projects, but the CDBG money and the HUD grant money is all going to have to be reallocated. So, my recommendation would be that you reallocate those toward the HOT program, because when you talk about consolidated services, that is what those HOT officers do, day in and day out. That is their primary job. They work with the unhoused. They help them get their identification. They identify those individuals who need either mental health or who need substance abuse assistance. I don't know why we would insist on doing extra when we already have it, and they're already connected to the NGOs. So, my recommendation would be that you postpone the substantial amendment until the new revised substantial amendment is prepared that has already been indicated will need to be done, so that way we're not sending HUD a revised substantial amendment every other month. Let's get everything in one basket, get everything put together, and then send it to them like we know what we're doing. But I would request that we really put a lot more of that over towards the HOT group, because that is what they do. And if that is the concern that the council had about it, then that is who should be helping to direct that. Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. I have a quick question for you. So, one of the recommendations that I heard from Mr. Hahn, I think I'm pronouncing his name, is for us, I'm just trying to get your opinion, is little small tiny homes, I'm assuming, since we're changing our ordinance for '31. Would that be something that we can consider with funding, working with the community to build more homes, a little small affordable homes in that area on the North Side?
Yes, you could do affordable housing development with home dollars. It has to be underwritten, like a regular bank loan. HUD requires that it's underwritten, so there's layering, and there's a capital stack that needs to be in there. There's review of the capacity of the developer. Have they done this before? How many years do they have in? Are they working with a consultant? So, it's doable, but there are still some pretty strong requirements from the feds to make that achievable. So, that is something that can be done to do tiny houses. You could do owner-occupied development. You could do rental housing development. It's all under home, but I would like to, and I know this is different, but there was a comment, what you can't do with home money is fund your police homeless outreach team. It's only for affordable housing development activities.
Correct. I understood that. Yes, ma'am. So, did you, I'm sorry, did you have a recommendation?
Yes, the recommendation was that council approved the ordinance for the substantial amendment. That was at the end of the presentation.
Okay. So, with that being said, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion, Councilmember Segar?
I just have one real quick question. Is there a...
Ms. McNair.
When they talk about affordable housing, is there a set definition of what that means? What does affordable housing mean?
Affordable housing is housing that is at or below 80% AMI, area median income on the rent restrictions. Typically, you see most of the affordable housing with restrictions at 60% to 65%. A big chunk of it is at 50% and to a lesser degree, 30%. And affordable housing, they design it so that the rents and/or what a household pays is equal to an amount of 30% of their gross income.
30% of their gross income. Okay. And that's on the rental part? Is that kind of the same? Do they use that same for like, if they, because I remember, and I know we talked about like home buyers programs, are they able to use this for like home assistance?
Yes. Home buyer activities include the development of units for a low-to-moder income household to purchase, and the income limit on that is 80%, and it still calculates to about 30% of their income on the monthly payment.
And that has nothing to do with areas, you know? We can't say, okay, all our affordable housing is in certain areas. That has nothing to do with that, or is...
That is correct. That's one of the main distinctions between home and CDBG. CDBG has a provision that it's a low-to-moder income area or beneficiary, but home, you can develop, and they really like the development, and other areas that have higher opportunities for the households that will be there. So, that's school, that's work opportunities, access to transportation and highways, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. She made a recommendation. Anything else, Mr.?
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, a motion direction, sir.
I make a motion, a direction to approve PH-25037.
Is there, Councilmember Solomon?
Second.
All in favor? Yes. All opposed? No. Is this a motion or direction or a motion? I think this is a motion.
This is just a motion on the item.
Yeah, it's a motion. I take that back. Councilmember Segar, it is a motion, not a motion direction. I apologize.
So, I clarify, I make a motion, not a direction, a motion.
Correct.
Final, is that the final?
Yes, this is it. So, you make a motion to approve PH-25-037.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Solomon. All in favor? Yes. All opposed? No. Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary.
PH-25038, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance authorizing the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and the proposed activities under the fiscal year 2025-26 Annual Action Plan describing the use of community development block grant, CDBG, home investment partnerships, home, and the use of Home American Rescue Plan, ARP, program funds, second public hearing. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance authorizing submittal of the 2025-29 Consolidated Plan and the Year One 2025-26 Annual Action Plan describing the use of funds and authorizing the application for allocation and expenditure of $1,350,070 in FY 2025-26 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds, and the use of $40,375.09, CDBG reprogrammed funds, and the application for allocation and expenditure of $545,001.73 in Home Investment Partnerships, home, program funds, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date."
Thank you. Ms. McNair.
Thank you. As an entitlement community, each year, the City of Colleen is awarded funding from the U.S. Department of Urban Housing and Urban Development, HUD, via the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Funds. In 2021, the city received a one-time award of Home American Rescue Plan funds to address the need for homeless assistance and supportive services. CDBG activities must meet a national objective, benefit a low and moderate income person, aid in the prevention or elimination of slum and blight, respond to natural disasters. Home activities must be used for affordable housing initiatives, and that includes development and/or redevelopment of units for tenants and owners or rental assistance. This is a new slide from last month. Home ARP activities must benefit one of the following qualified population: homeless at risk of homelessness, homelessness at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, daily violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking; other populations where providing supportive services or assistance to prevent homelessness, or would serve those at greatest risk of housing instability; and veterans and their families that include a veteran that meet one of the criteria are eligible to receive home ARP assistance. This is our grant cycle timeline. We had two community planning meetings in February. The CDAC meetings are open meetings. We had our meeting here last month, and we also posted where input could be received in accordance to the Citizens Participation Plan. Community input and surveys. City must seek input from the community, including holding public hearings and submit the Consolidated Plan and Year One Action Plan for HUD approval. Community planning meetings and public surveys are intended to gather citizen input on community needs, and our survey was up for over a month. CDAC convenes to review, evaluate, and recommend funding awards for the proposed activities. Applications are scored to include significance, impact, and delivery, feasibility, and compliance, and leveraging. Our CDBG entitlement for this program year, which is program year '25 fiscal year '26, is $1,350,070, and we are reprogramming $40,375.90 for a total of $1,390,445.09. These are the breakdowns of the set aside with 65% plus going towards housing, public facilities, improvements, code enforcement, other CDBG activities, 20% for admin, and 15% for public services. Mr. Johnny Frederick, is he still here?
He's still here.
Is our CDAC chair, and he will present the CDAC recommendations.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I'll be glad to go through these again like we did last month, if you want to hear them all again.
Counsel.
Or we can just do questions, if you like.
You'd like to hear it again?
That's just fine. Bring in route into the zone. We had requested $12,638. We recommend $11,364.57. Communities and schools was partial pay for a connections program at Colleen Elementary School, salary assistance of $19,000. We recommend you fund that for $19,000. Families in crisis, a client case manager, partial payment, they had requested $30,000, and we recommend you fund that at $20,000. The Greater Colleen Community Clinic, office manager salary of $25,000, their request, and we recommended $22,000. And I'll note that I am on the board of the community clinic and did not participate in any of the discussions about this particular one. Hill Country Community Action had requested $34,686.78 for Senior Meals Program Director's salary, and we recommend $25,000 for that, excuse me. And for the KPD Homeless Outreach Team, the Clean Unification Program, Licensed Master Social Worker and ID Recovery Work had asked for $112,000, and we recommend $100,145.93. And the KPD Engagement Unit had asked for $10,000 for advertising and materials for events, and we recommend you fund that in the amount of $5,000, for a total amount of $202,510.50, about $40,000 less than what was requested. We had a lot more requests than we had money to fill.
Yes, sir.
Then for code enforcement, we have been doing a three-year going-forward commitment with them so they can keep people on. If they just had a one-year funding, it's hard to keep people staying for just one year and then have to replace them. This allows us to forward commit money for the next couple of years. We're in the middle of one of those now, and we're recommending we do another one. The amount recommended is $61,972.64, and that's for each year, for this year and the next two years. And the, I'm sorry, that's for the last year of the commitment. This next commitment is for $64,474, and this will be year one of the three-year commitment, for $126,446.64. Community Development Housing Rehab Program requested $200,000 for doing rehab of vital components and abavements in housing, in architectural barriers and ADA accessibility, recommending $200,000 for that program. Conder Park and Marlboro Park improvements to include drainage, placecates, signage, basketball courts. They'd originally were going to do a third park. We didn't have enough funds to allocate to everything that was needed to be done. They'd asked for $774.543, and we recommend you fund that program for the two parks, for $591.473.95, for $791.473.95. And then for administration, for the cap that we can give for administration is $270,014. That's the percentage of the grant that's available. And then on to home program, affordable housing activities. 75% of the grant can go towards housing activities of $408,000. The community housing development organizations, or CHODOs, get 15% of the grant set aside. Even though we don't currently have a CHODO in place, we are required to set aside that 15% each year we get the grant. Administration's 10% of that grant, and the total is $545,001.73. And we're asking that you take and fund affordable housing development, tenant-based rental assistance, and the first-time home buyers program for that $408.751.29, the CHODOs of $81.750.26, and administration of $54,518.18. The ARP program monies, you can see on their screen the percentages of what it can go to. Hilltop Recovery Ministries had requested $108,040 for a chemical-based dependency facility. We determined that that particular program, because it is a in, am I trying to find, inpatient care, pardon me, inpatient care facility, it does not qualify for these home ARP funds. It has to be outpatient-based, and that was not what their request was for. So, we're recommending that you do not fund that program. And KPD requested that their funding rate should not be adopted, and we had several programs that withdrew their requests due to different reasons, some of them being lack of federal funds to keep them afloat to be able to use the programs that they were going to utilize, and you can see those on the screen as well. And the citizen comment period allows for additional input from the community, and comment periods open from June 9th through July 15th, 2025, and comments may be submitted publicly in writing, and I'll let Ms. McNair continue on from there.
Thank you.
Sir, I think we have a question from Councilmember Segar. And thank you, sir, for reading that again. It was in our package. Thank you. Councilmember Segar, he has a question.
Yeah, because I saw that there was the, for the Reunification Center, $100,000 for social worker. So, based on the vote from the council from the previous meeting, do we need to reallocate that, or?
No, that social worker is actually with the homeless outreach team, and they're doing work to engage people that are unsheltered, link them with relatives out of state. But they're already doing the work, and they have been doing that work for two years without a physical building, because they're embedded with the CEU-HOT unit.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the citizen comments and availability of the draft plan, again, all of these were available at the five previously mentioned places. We did receive comments on the con plan, Ms. Celestia, which is very brief. I believe it's only two comments that we received, but we must say what they were and what we're doing with those.
Okay, we received two comments relating to the Consolidated Plan and the Annual Action Plan. One was from the Texas Homeless Network and included additional information to our con plan regarding homeless services and resources, including included in their Texas Balance of Balance of State Continuum of Care 2025 Action Plan. The second one was from an urban planner and environmental policy advocate with ties to the Colleen and Copper's Cove community. And she submitted comments on how to improve on projects that are funded with CDBG and home funds and to ensure that the vision in developing these projects is inclusive, resilient, and forward-thinking.
Thank you. Thank you.
So next steps, if approved, we will submit the CON Plan and annual action plan to HUD by August 15th. And then August 1st, we should have HUD approval of our annual plan and execution of our HUD agreements. So alternatives is to not accept the 2025-26 grant funds and return the funding to HUD, reject CDAC funding recommendations as presented, accept CDAC funding recommendations as presented, accept CDAC recommendations excluding the home ARC recommendation for Colleen Police Department Community Engagement Unit, and issue an ordinance authorizing the 2025-29 consolidated plan and proposed activities under fiscal year 25-26 Annual Action Plan describing use of CDBG and home program funds. Staff recommends that council approve an ordinance adopting the 2025-29 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 26 Annual Action Plan describing the use of funds and authorizing application for allocation of CDBG and home program funds excluding the home ARC recommendation for KPD CEU.
Thank you, Ms. McNair. Do anyone have any questions for Mr. Frederick or Ms. McNair? All right, can I get a motion to approve or disapprove? Oh, I forgot about public hearing. Public hearing is open.
Our community engagement unit continues to help unhoused individuals find permanent and/or temporary transitional housing regardless of whether we have a center built on our own. We need to find a way if those monies are going to be reallocated to make sure that the community engagement unit still has the same opportunities to assist individuals in our community. We don't need to outsource that to a third-party NGO. They already have that covered. If the concern is the need for services, then we should fund Hilltop. We didn't know if Centex Arc would work for us either the first time that we tried them and gave them money. And now that we're not doing currently the reunification center, it's not going to be competing with any potential city service. We need as many resources as possible. Home Arc may not be the right place for some individuals, but Hilltop might be. We don't need to have just one place being a monopoly. I think we should at least give them a portion of what they're asking, provide a couple beds and give it a try. It might be good for us. Also, I'm a little concerned because the plans read almost exactly like Title 24, subtitle B, Chapter 25, Part 4100 of the CFRs. So it sounds like the city is trying to put together another program. It would be another nonprofit that would operate housing and affordable homes, but the city would still get all of the admin money for it. So if you have time in your board, you can go ahead and look at that CFR. It's not the longest read out of, out of Title, or Chapter 25 and Title 24. We need to still make sure that that money is available to the community engagement unit. We need to make sure that in the future, we are following our citizen participation plan. We are involving organizations that would cater to or assist low-income individuals, individuals who are non-English speaking. So that would be not just Hispanic, but we have other populations that live within our community that don't speak English. And these meetings, again, are supposed to be informal. They are supposed to be so that there can be a back-and-forth discussion instead of just watching my clock. And they are supposed to also be taken to the places where those individuals, most in need of this assistance, would have easy access to it, not just always in one place. And it's supposed to be at a time which is convenient for them. If they're working, 3 o'clock is not a good time for them. And saying immediately after a regular meeting, you don't know if you need to be here at 3:30, 5:50, 7:10, 8:20. It needs to be a set time if we're going to have open and honest communication.
Public hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to approve or disapprove PH-25-038? Councilmember Segarra.
Mayor, I make the motion to approve PH-25-038.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I'll second that. Do we need to clarify which option the motion is for?
Is it, which one? Is it the one she recog, would you please?
I mean, I'm good with staff's recommendation.
Would you please clarify what you read, please, Ms. McNair?
With staff's recommendation.
Could you bring the slide up so he can see it verbatim?
I have it right here, mayor. I can say it for you. Staff recommends that City of Colleen Council approve an ordinance adopting 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and FY 2026 Annual Action Plan describing use of funds and authorizing application for an allocation of community development block grant and home investment partnership program funds excluding the home ARC recommendation for Colleen Police Department Community Engagement Unit.
Is that what your motion is for, Councilmember Segarra?
I change my motion to what he said.
Okay, right there on the screen. Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero.
PH-25-039, hold a public hearing and consider a memorandum resolution adopting revisions to the City of Colleen Citizen Participation Plan, second public hearing.
Thank you. Ms. McNair.
All right. Pursuant to the citizen participation requirements of 24 CFRs such as 91.105, HUD requires a participating jurisdiction to have an approved citizen participation plan that outlines policies and procedures for ensuring that residents have an opportunity to be fully engaged in the community improvement activities. The citizen participation plan provides the framework through which residents can have input and influence over proposed community development activities, particularly the development, implementation, and assessment of programs as outlined in the five-year consolidated plan, annual action plan, consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, analysis of impediments to fair housing, and other city-administer HUD-funded programs. As a recipient of CDBG and home entitlement funds, the City of Colleen is a designated PJ. The City of Colleen Citizen Participation Plan was originally approved and adopted by the city in July 1988 with revisions in January 1995, April 1998, January 2011, January 15, January 2018, and April 2020. So the proposed revisions will clarify the CD staff and CDAC responsibilities, update substantial amendment criteria, update other relevant information to yield increased citizen participation, including adding language to accommodate for the council meeting schedule, and remove individual names of staff and replace with specific staff positions as a point of contact and update formatting. If I could note, as far as the substantial amendment, what the Transportation and HUD Appropriations Committee with the federal, with the House of Representatives suggests on the 13th, they actually have proposed that we not have home. Our substantial amendment proposal for this citizen participation plan was ahead of the game in saying that we wouldn't do substantial amendments for home money. So that helps us. We're tracking with the feds already. The language to accommodate for the city council schedule was to make sure that we have in there that our meetings will not start before 5:00. And that's, it's the same with what we have right now. Our citizen participation plans or public hearings don't start before 5:00, even though the regular council meetings start at 3:00. I have it right here in front of me. Okay, thank you. The public notice and comment period, same as the previous two. Our draft was available at the Library City Hall Community Development online. And staff recommends that council hold a public hearing to receive citizen comments and approve a memorandum or resolution adopting the revised citizen participation plan. This does not require an ordinance, just an adoption.
Yes, ma'am. Before we go into public hearing, Councilmember Alvarez, do you want to ask a question now or after public hearing? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Melissa Brown.
This is our response on our CAPR for describing all of the actions taken to ensure that the public is aware and informed about meetings to actually participate in these plans. If you can't see it, it is an entire blank page. There is nothing written there. So apparently, the city did nothing out of just making the posting in the paper to make sure that citizens had access and information about the plans. Going to have to go in our CAPR again this year. If we're going to submit this and approve this and adopt this, and I think it's important that we hold to it. So if you haven't had the opportunity to read through the whole thing yet, I understand. But comments at public hearings in these informal meetings should count as comments. I know that there were comments made one month ago at the meeting. They were not included as having been comments received. Documents and prior spending should be available without having to do any public information requests. There's no reason it can't be digital and available right there on the city's website on the community development page. Our plan says that this is going to have a framework for residents, community, and neighborhood-based organizations to have input in the planning and implementation coordination and assessment of a consolidated plan and the proposed use of the city's HUD-funded community planning and development programs. That doesn't say that those organizations have to come out to a CDAC meeting. This actually says that we're going to facilitate allowing those organizations to participate. Public hearings, as she said, will be primarily after 5:00 p.m., but your notice is insufficient then because your notice just says immediately following the city council meeting, your city council meeting starts at 3:00. It needs to be more specific. If we have people show up here at 3:00, they came at 4:45 expecting 5:00. They've sat here for an hour and a half and they sat for an hour and the meeting still hadn't even started yet. Accessible meeting materials. Actually, I came across them by happenstance when I walked down that hallway, but nobody was handing them out. Nobody was filling out the form to say who was in attendance because it's not just about who comments, it's about who is in attendance. Community planning meetings will be held throughout the city in locations easily accessible by low and moderate income persons and to interested groups and organizations. Did we find out if there were any groups or organizations interested in giving their input on this? As far as I am aware, we did not. Available to the public, everything it says, you have to go over to the CDAC office or you have to do an open records public information request, which takes about two weeks at a minimum to get that information. This should be available to us online. This is important for us people to track.
Thank you, public hearing. Your time is up.
May I have 30 seconds from the council?
Is your, Councilmember Alvarez? Is there a no? No, I'm talking to you, Councilwoman Cobb. I heard him. I heard him. Okay, no from Councilman Solomon? No, no, thank you. A public hearing is closed. Ms. McNair, I have a question for you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
So there was a lot of stuff just was said about you not following the correct protocol as far as public hearing adherence, also as far as not reaching out to certain ethnicities. Also, no one was in the hall, just a lot of stuff. Could you clarify everything that was said? Are we following the correct public protocol for public hearings?
Yes, through what we have in the citizen participation plan, we are. I believe, and Ms. Sierra can confirm, but our mailing list when we start this process has over 700 recipients on it. We do a public notice for the meetings in the Colleen Daily Herald. We have these open meeting staff is out there. I believe this particular meeting did not say it starts at 5:00 because we anticipated a long city council meeting, but that's within our citizen's participation plan. Even if your meeting, your regular meeting had ended at 3:30, to be compliant, we would not have moved forward with this meeting until no sooner than 5:00 p.m.
You did say that to us, correct?
Yes. So, yes, we have staff that's there. We've had those plans available for people to comment, so, yes.
Yes, ma'am. So what she stated, thank you for that. I have another question. Even if we were to finish our meeting at 4:00, we still couldn't leave because this meeting had to happen at 5:00 and she did put that information out. And I guess my last question to you is if a person, we have our public hearing and people give a comment, do that have to be included in your comment session?
It depends on what it is, but we typically do try to include all comments because usually the comments have to be, and that was a mistake on our end not to say that we got comments at the June meeting. But we include the comments to see if they are material to changes or adoption to the plan. And sometimes general comments, we just receive them as just general comments. Last month, I really couldn't make out, I don't even want to say that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I have it in writing for you.
Ma'am, Ms. Brown, please stop being rude and interrupting her. Ms. McNair, in the audience, she wants to be put out, that's why I'm not. Ms. McNair, my question to you, we have one more public hearing, correct?
No, ma'am, this is it.
This is it?
Yes. We have had two.
It's where the rubber hit the road, counsel. All right, well, thank you for that. Anything else you want before we vote on this item, up or down?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. All right, counsel, can I get a motion to approve or disapprove? I mean, we still have to do a motion. Motion and a second and vote to consider the ordinance.
It's just a memorandum or resolution, it's not an ordinance on this one.
Mr. King.
Mayor, I move to approve that memorandum resolution adopting the revised citizen participation plan as presented.
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon?
Second.
We have Councilmember, whichever one, Councilmember.
It don't matter.
Second before I call you. But we're going to have to go with Councilmember. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Councilmember Solomon, can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Cobb, you have your, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.